Okay, and we'll start with our opening exercises. I'm Mr. Dodd.
Good morning. We're in the middle of Red River Week and-
And I wore my red.
Certainly, we need to keep drug prevention in the minds of our students and the focus on that with the current crisis that we're in and all of the issues going on in this world today. Also, the Unity Walk is today at Liberty Park, 4:00. I think they start the walk at 4:15. Obviously, that too is standing against bullying, and so I know that we all support that. And with that, if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's add this to our agenda. And do we have a motion to accept the adoption of the agenda with this ad?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy. A second by Ms. Howers. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any citizens' comments? Okay. School Operations Mike Mullin drew up a memorandum of understanding and then between the- Where did I go? Uh, Citrus County School Board. I need to get better, don't I?
This is a year-end thing that we update. Mr. Bishop is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Anyone with any questions?
I believe approval of the re-accreditation between the school board, such as the union official workforce.
Second.
I have a motion of Mr. Dodd. A second by Ms. Howers.
This is like a win-win situation.
It is a win-win situation.
It's a requirement too for the state for us to be able to grant a grant.
A requirement and a win-win?
Yes.
That's great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Chair, since Mr. Bishop's here, I just was curious about the re-accreditation process. How'd that went?
Um, stressful, but no worries. Considering Lori, Karen, and I were all brand new to COE accreditation, they were fine. We ended up with a couple minor findings that we have to correct. We had two written plans that we have in place. One has to do with our work-based activity plans, and one is our placement verification plan. And we have things in place that we just don't have in writing, so we have to update those plans, so.
And put them in writing?
Minor things, yeah, just added to writing. So they said 70% of their findings are in those areas, so we felt pretty good about it considering they were all new resources.
Good, good.
Well, thank you for asking, Michael. You'll have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. School calendar.
Mrs. Crowell will present the board with the options for the calendar committee.
Good morning.
All right, we have for you here, they're being passed around a hard copy of our three calendar options that our committee has created for you to approve today, remembering who our calendar committee is, of course, at first. But I just want to remind you of our timeline regarding the 2018-19 calendar. We repeated step five, as you can see on the screen, where our calendar committee did meet. We developed two or three calendar options. Actually, we developed three. We reconvened last Friday to act upon specific recommendations of the board, one being that, you know, wanting at least one of the calendars to have a Monday start date instead of all three starting on the Friday. So we did reconvene as a committee, like I said, last Friday afternoon, and we did change one of our calendars to meet that need. So we are now at step six, where we are submitting this to the board and superintendent for your review and approval. And then after this, we, of course, then will go into the voting, the voting process. The first page of your packet there are the major differences between the three calendar options. We create this chart kind of just so that, really for the people that are voting as well, so that they can kind of see in a glance what are the major differences. So there are differences regarding the number of half-days, whether it be for professional development or for workdays, where you see calendar one and two both have 12 half-days for being for PE and ABE and for workdays, where calendar number three has a difference there. They only have seven half-days, so that is a significant difference. The first day of school, as you can see in calendar one, has the students starting Monday, August 13th, teachers coming August 2nd. On calendar number two and calendar number three, the students would be starting on that Friday before, August 10th, and teachers starting, as you can see, a little different there as well, whether it be the first or the second. The last day of school, calendar one and two are the same, however, calendar number three does have the students ending a day earlier, May 29th, and the teachers also ending a day earlier on May 30th. Spring break and the county fair, calendar one and three have it during the same week. Calendar number two wanted to, I mean, and each one of these decisions, by the way, were made with reason, okay? They had discussion amongst that committee, calendar number two committee, and I know, Ms. Howers, you were part of this, and, you know, their discussions led to these decisions. And of course, we use feedback from the board, feedback from principals, principals, APs, staff, and also feedback from SAC committees that did come to the board, came to our committee. So the different, the calendar number two has spring break occurring a week before the fair week. And I believe the reasoning behind that, Ms. Howers, was so that the students that participate in the fair actually, and the families actually experience also a spring break possibly, right?
Yes, because they've worked at it for years.
And teachers as well, same thing.
Yeah, teachers have never had a spring break.
Now, there's another difference regarding four-day weekends. Both calendar number one and calendar number two have April 19th to the 22nd being a four-day weekend. That's that Easter weekend, so Easter Monday also being off. Calendar number three also has that weekend, but in addition, has an additional four-day weekend in February. Thanksgiving break, calendar one and two has the whole week off, where calendar number three, as you can see, has the three days off. So they, we get off Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, come to school Monday and Tuesday of that week. And then finally, the last two rows there are talking about the days in each semester and the days in each quarter, and you can see there are differences there. Calendar number three is the one that actually is split even, 90-day, 90-day, where calendar one and two have a little bit of differences between semester one and semester two. And then when you go through the rest of the packet, you see each calendar described in detail or shown in detail with color coding, showing where those workdays would be, professional development, holidays, early dismissals, where they would fall. And then on the back of each one of those calendars is the rationale behind it. So each committee, of course, did type in there what their rationale was behind making those decisions. And you have that for each one of the calendars. So you have it for calendar one, calendar two, same thing, calendar three. That's it. So the next step would be, of course, the voting process, where we would have 30 calendar days for everyone to review and vote. The schools add calendar vote to the SAC agenda, of course, for a vote. All the employees in our school system has one vote, have one vote, and all of our SACs have one vote each. So on December 1st, all the votes will be tallied here in the county office, if it is approved today, of course. And then on December 12th, I would be coming back to the board, showing you and sharing with you the majority, the calendar that had the majority of the votes to support the recommendation for the school board to approve. Any questions?
Yes, I've got a question. I just want to make sure the very earliest that we can end school is May 28th, is that right? Because you had told us that there has to be so many days after 1st of May. Is that correct?
Right, well, with testing, the testing calendar next year for the, for the school year, the one that we're talking about, has a different piece where you have to, you have to test the last four weeks of your school year, okay, of our school year that we decide. However, you cannot test before May 1st.
Correct.
So that's how the statute reads. So they're basically, honestly, they're telling us when we have to end school without telling us when to end school, if you want the full four weeks for testing, which we, of course, need to meet all of the testing needs that we have for makeup and everything like that.
Just wanted to make sure, because I was asked that question, I thought I answered correctly, and so.
Yes, absolutely.
I had a school petition yesterday, and they're already planning next year specific dates.
Right, right.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the 2018-2019 school calendar options for Citrus County Schools. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy. A second by Mr. Dodd. Any further questions or comments?
Just.
Part of the committee said that we had to start earlier than August, that Friday, August 10th. So somewhere along the line, I think our superintendents and our boards need to somehow communicate with Tallahassee that specific dates, the 10th, is a moving target. Like, next year-
Saturday.
Miss Mullin said it's a Saturday, so should we start school on Saturday? Are we backing it up? So I suppose that we somehow communicate with Tallahassee that-
Good luck.
...the opening day should be the second Wednesday. Our teachers are used to having a three-day.
That makes perfect sense.
It does.
That's why we've been, we've been a member.
But I think if enough of us communicate, and I think none of us talk to one another, but all three calendars came out on the Friday, and I said, what a great opportunity to get our parents involved. Kids are going to come to school on Friday anyway because they've been home all summer, and the parents can't wait for them. But, and the kids want to see their friends, so I don't, I don't think any of our groups, and I'm only speaking for our group too, thought that starting Friday, we at least get one day of all that paperwork already. But they do need to change that to maybe the, if they want to change to 2nd Tuesday, 2nd Thursday, but it's-
First of the number.
It should be a specific-
Will you take care of that for her, Amy?
I'm on it.
What we can do though is we can add this to our legislative platform.
Yes.
Add that, because that's what, that's, to me, part of what it really is.
Thomas, add that to your list of things you're going to work on.
I just put it on there.
All right.
It just doesn't make sense.
I just want to thank the committee again, Ms. Howers, for her work. The county always does a great job. We facilitate that well, Ms. Crowell, and I think we've got some good options, at least, for the staff to choose from.
All right, thank you. Are you mad? We gotta, we gotta vote? No, we should, we should send a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. All right. Approved? Yeah, I asked, and, oh, what, maybe? Yeah, none.
The next item is this splash grant from Crystal River Primary School, and I think a lot of you are familiar with the project that they do, with the eel grass.
Yes.
And the kids grow it in their classroom, and so the grant pays for that, and then they plant the grass into the river and create a whole circle experience for the kids. And it's certainly a benefit to the community as well.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this splash grant to Crystal River Primary School.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Dodd. A second by Ms. Howers. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. I don't, I, do I need to go ahead? Yeah, maybe I do. Go ahead. Excuse me. You just go right in my head, Suzy. Yeah, I don't, I don't waste any time. No, not that. I appreciate that. Okay, I'm asking the board to approve the instructional and support recommendations as listed in the golden rod.
I think we should have the exception of the permission for personnel and staff as in the golden rod.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Howers. A second by Mr. Kennedy. To accept the golden rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to do-
We don't think that we have more appointments than we have resignations, so.
This is great, good thing, thank you. We need to approve the First Amendment to the Care Here LLC Citrus County School District Agreement.
I move that we approve the First Amendment to the Care Here LLC Citrus County Schools District Agreement.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy to go a second. Okay, thank you, Ms. Howers. Questions or comments?
I just want to say to Mr. Bishop and Ms. Chernich, thank you for bringing this forward. This was a lot of work, I know, getting the parties, getting the data together, and this really helps all of our members that are in Care Here and also for our district and costs, so thank you for doing this.
Yeah, I just have a question in regards to the, to the additional support. I understand, or I think it's going to be for a position, that'll work in risk management. And I just wanted a little review of that. Will that come back to the board for approval, or how?
No, it's approved if I know.
It's replacing a position that has been previously vacated.
So there's already a job task analysis, it's already completed as far as what duties are, it's going to be?
Yes.
And could you just go over those real quick?
Assist the employee benefits specialist, assist in working with our self-insurance fund, with benefits, with customer service, with health insurance, with the Care Here Wellness Center, the running of the, to assist with the daily operations of the Wellness Center, the things we do and process in our office to support the Wellness Center. So this person will be assisting in both the self-insurance and the Wellness Center.
Is this, is this going to assist the Care Here staff too? Is it kind of a two ways, three years, or just pretty much for us?
It's for us, but they will get a benefit from it because we'll be able to, you know, run these things more efficiently in a more timely manner. But they will be working directly for us. Yes.
Of course he has.
It's definitely for us.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, Mr. Bradshaw, it's up to you. All right. And you got a business that needs to come before the school board, Mr. Mullin.
No, I think we'll take enough of your time up at the workshop.
All right, okay. Ms. Howers?
Yesterday, at Crystal River Primary School, and they were so thrilled, bowled over about the money they gave, $27,000 back to students, that they, in fact, they asked them this first amendment for yesterday. Did someone put a decimal point in the wrong? But they said it was like $200 a student. But they were thrilled, but they came up with all sorts of ideas, good ideas. I know Amy Bailey has the practical nurse program graduation, remember the 7 Tuesday, 7 P.M. to go there, we sell it always.
Awesome.
It's fun to attend. And the, the last day, I sat up with some of the people, James Angel, God, he was a business middle school.
Prior to that, he was at Crystal River Middle School.
Yes, right. Many years, and I think the agricultural stuff, doing fairly.
All right.
Ms. Howers, I'm happy, well, I'm going to go to the walk this afternoon, although I'm ready. But I noticed in an article that we have an alliance with FSU and their medical program.
I saw that.
And that the county is giving those people a house that the county owns. So I just want to remind you one more time about our ESE department, that the Home for Educational Students that are, are being put into jobs and they need houses. And so I want to make sure that we don't forget our Fire at Citrus presentation for homes for our kids that can live in mentally. And we need to find out how many other houses the county owns.
Yes. All right, Mr. Kennedy?
Legislative stuff. One, Representative Mazulo introduced House Bill 311, which is the alternative high school graduation requirements. I believe I sent you all a copy of it. This is the bill that, among other things, gives a option for students that do not pass the 10th grade ELA test, as well as the Algebra I EOC, to be able to use a portfolio option similar to what we use in third grade for those students. It is finally some common sense legislation that we can use to help our students, particularly our career and educational, our career and technical education students. It also gives the option of using the ACT Word Keys Test, which at some point, maybe research and accountability could share some information about it in a future workshop, because we're going to be hearing a lot about that, and maybe before we get to Tallahassee, that can be something we, we get some information on. I know Ms. Crowell's team is doing a lot with that, so I would like to make a recommendation that if, and I hope we do support the alternative high school graduations bill, that we send a letter from our board to the chairman of both the House and the Senate committees, educational committees, in support of that bill, because I do think we want to, you know, let our legislators know, and in particular, the legislators that are going to be making the decision on the committees, that we support this, we support Ralph Mazulo's efforts in this, and this is the kind of common sense bill that we need. So if we, if we do, and we don't have to make that decision today, that's just something we can, we can noodle around this time. The other thing too is that we, I do have tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday, I will be in Gainesville at our legislative platform for Florida School Board Association, and I was wondering if this board has any issues, or, and we don't need to pass them today, but maybe just if we have consensus that we are in support of this current bill, the alternative graduation things.
That is like for, for some of the definitions, one second, that is really the alternative. And your mind goes to things in the past, and folk, if you play with it. That's not what we're talking about. It may be.
Power sometimes.
Well, there, the legislation doesn't, specifically does not, the idea is that it's not closed and not overly defined at this time.
I know, but I need to, you need to apply it in your meeting, could talk about it.
Oh, yeah, and it's, and I have the statute, the statutory language, and it specifically talks about that it must meet and show demonstration of mastery of skills. And that's really the, and that's what the third grade requirement is, that it demonstrates mastery.
Right, but it still discuss what that would entail, what that could be, give an example, so that people could, in turn, talk with their constituents about it, because just the word doesn't convey it. And there has to be more of an explanation.
Okay.
And we want to make sure I can have the words to be able to explain.
Okay. The, the other things here, you know, digital classroom allocation, having a minimum level of $500,000, which is what we have been getting, as opposed to, in the past, they've tried dropping that to $250,000, which impacts Citrus County negatively. You know, are we in agreement that that's continuously been something we've been looking at?
Absolutely.
Title I, both sparsity funding, maintain current levels at the very minimum.
Increase them.
Increase them if possible. Thoughts on removal of the required 150-minute PE mandate at the elementary level, since they've, they have now added to us a mandated recess, but they've yet to rescind the PE. We all agree PE is, is a good thing, it's the mandate that's the issue. Any thoughts on that, Mr. Dodd?
Well, it's interesting, because, you know, when I get to the SAC meetings, I'm always asked for how that's working out in the process. And definitely it's put strain on us and our teachers. But I'm not really sure that I can say that I know enough about that to endorse. Well, what you're saying, basically, you want the PE mandate removed.
PE, the mandate removed, not that we aren't still doing it.
Right.
But it should be something that the schools and the local school boards decide, not Tallahassee.
See, I would go just the opposite, that I'd do a way with recess and require the PE, because PE is much more involved and more structured behaviors than.
That's where, that's what puts where we are now, because they did that. And then they said, well, no, now-
But if you march in the band, or you play football or basketball.
Well, if there's not consensus right now, that's fine. I, again, my feeling is, is that I don't need Tallahassee telling us anymore at a local level what to do.
I agree with that.
That's really my biggest issue with that.
Anything.
Well, and this is why, to me, whether they're mandating recess or mandating PE, I don't think they should be mandating any of it. That should be something that's decided by the schools and school board.
And you're talking about the organized, they tell us, they teach, they should teach grammar.
Right.
But I certainly wouldn't allow to do that to the place where it's down there, and that's some sort of playing football or basketball.
And Mr. Heber would tell us, we're doing that still right now, where we're teaching other subject areas in PE, by, you know, doing that cross-curricular, restoring of the two mil-
Absolutely.
-capable mill rate.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, again, and this is going to be a continual issue, local control particularly upholding, and I've seen, I've seen this, this theme of Article 9, Section 4 of our Education, which says that it is the school board that shall operate, control, and supervise all free public schools within the school district. This is, I will say, you-
What's happening?
We are not, you know, we have not marched down the, the idea of joining a lawsuit. I am perfectly good with that, but I still believe that our legislature needs to uphold the local control. I don't need necessarily join a lawsuit to do that, but we need to make that clear.
The lawsuit was filed.
Yes, it was filed.
It was filed.
So, and then the only other thing with that, so that, I can share those things. And Mr. Bradshaw, this is partly maybe something for you to look at if this board agrees. When HB 7069 was passed, it stated that we are to use a standardized charter contract in the future. And I believe it's an unaltered contract, is the way it's implied in legislation. We just passed a contract with the Academy of Environmental Science, but that really starts a ticker for us that in five years, or in this case, four and a half, roughly right now, that would mean that either the law needs to change that we can use a modified contract, or the academy is going to have to look at becoming a charter school, or we're going to have to look at some type of, of plan. I know this seems like, well, four and a half years is a long time from now, and we all know it's not that long a time. I think we need to maybe get some more information as to what we're up against, because as we talk to our legislators, we need to say to them, because we are, I think, the only charter that has a district charter like this, that the way the law is written, that charter would have to go away in its current form. And we will need to address that and have a, a plan for that. So I think we need to get some more information as to what impact this could have, so we can start that dialogue, because it can take, as we know, years with getting things resolved. So I don't think we're starting too early, but I think that we need to make sure everyone is aware of this process and how it can impact our local school. That's just what I think.
All right.
No, I will not be up for that.
He'll be a game.
Please apologize for me, I'll be in Gainesville.
Okay, I made it out to the First Library kickoff.
Thank you.
Education Foundation, and they are featuring Storybook Treasures, which is a really neat concept. And I know there was an email that was sent out about signing up to be a celebrity reader. But that was just a really neat program with actually, where students would be given books and a little treat, a little item that goes along with the book, and it actually, you know, becomes the child's book. They keep it at the Starkville First Library. So that was a very nice program at North Coochitlak College. They had that on Friday. The only other thing is I will not be able to be at the upper bound ceremony either. I have an FHSAA meeting, conference call, meeting on an eligibility issue, and so I will not be able to be there. It's kind of fell at a different time. But for me to, to be there on Thursday, I'm not going to be able to be there. But for me to, to be there on Thursday, I'm not going to be able to make it, but I know we were all there, it was last week, correct?
Yes, we were all there.
It's nice to see the Rotary Clubs again, working in a combined effort to provide that program, so that's all I have.
Okay, I'm going tonight, and I'll be there tomorrow for the Florida School Board's Board of Direcment meeting. That's, that's only Wednesday, huh?
No, no, it's.
I should be back Thursday to go there.
They're having a meeting in Gainesville, it's great for all of us.
That's where April's from, that's where she lives. See, and, but we were supposed to, we were supposed to meet in September, when Irma came through. And so they canceled it, and then they rescheduled it, and they compressed it all together into one day. Hopefully I'll be there Thursday, I don't know.
Ginger, I'll be up and down, and tonight I'll be back.
Very good, well, I'm, I'm going to be in Gainesville tonight, so, yeah, boy. Anyway, I think that's all I have. So we're going to adjourn this meeting, and we're going to open workshop. And do you need to be for this?
I need to break policy.
Policy, okay, we've got policy up, good.
You want what members?
Good morning, sir.
These will look familiar to you, you just approved them at your last public hearing. They do require some additional tweaking to come into compliance with the FDLE audit. So we're bringing back to you today four policies, the first of which is 8.804 Authenticator It was originally discussed by policy forms in July. The only change is on page two of two. If a user forgets their password, or their password is compromised, a new temporary password will be given to the user by the LASO. The user will then create a new password when logged in, as outlined in the authentication strategy policy. When a user no longer needs to access the CGI system, or their access needs to be revoked, the LASO will remove this user from the system by deleting their username and password at that time. That is the only change to that one. You want me to just go through them all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
The next one is Bluetooth technologies. Previously, we had reserved a section for that in the event that we use it in the future, but we were told that we have to have a policy whether we use it or not. So this is.
Of course, that's what we were told.
But this is just a policy that says that we, 8.805, that the Citrus County School District does not permit the use of Bluetooth devices on the criminal justice information network. If we do.
Even though we didn't have justice.
Do in the future, we'll come back and.
If we do.
We can always amend.
We'll amend it.
Yes. 8.806, disposal of physical media, we just added a word on page one of two, section three, to, to state that it's an authorized district personnel, instead of just district personnel.
So that was in the FDLE audit, is that right?
Well, it wasn't specifically in the audit, it was just the comments that came back after we sent them the new language, they said, well, these are good, but you just need to make some additional modifications to make them a little tighter, so.
So we added authorized, and my question would be, who's going to authorize them?
Yep.
Who'll authorize them?
District personnel. Authorize the district personnel.
Someone who's authorized to authorize, the authorized personnel.
Specifically authorized.
This would be a great sale button.
And then the last one is encryption, 8.807. Specifically, Dr. Geddes and I met and went over all this, to work exactly the way it needed to be on page one of two.
PKI, dang it all.
I had to find out what that was. The district does not use public key infrastructure on the CGI network, it's been added, for clarification.
I, I'm relieved.
That's interesting that's in there though, Doc.
And that summarizes the changes that are being proposed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fixon, appreciate it. Employee assistance, that would be you, Mr. Bishop.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. If you recall back in the board meeting in July, there was some conversation amongst the board regarding the employee assistance program. At that time, I asked the board for some consideration to give staff time to put together a presentation, we're prepared to bring that forward today. Mr. Brown was going to come up. The charge, just to recall, the charge that was given to our staff was to explore different options for this employee assistance program, to include concepts such as the salary, would this person be a district employee, would it be a contracted services, would this be services that be provided onsite, offsite, as well as what do our neighboring counties do? And I think at the end of, I believe at the end of Mr. Brown's presentation, you'll see that we addressed each of the things that were discussed back in July, and we're here today to share that information with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, how are you?
Good, good. How's everyone doing today? Good, good. I'm going to stop and we'll get going. As Mr. Bishop mentioned, back in August, we were asked to look into an EAP program, and it allowed me the opportunity to learn a lot about what EAPs actually were, because I hadn't seen too many of them before, so. And that opportunity, you know, there's always a chance for growth and for learning, taking me back to the classroom. So, I want to take this opportunity to, to share with everyone what we have learned, and hopefully get some direction as to where the board would like to go from here, okay? So what is that employee assistance program, we're going to refer to them as EAPs? They traditionally include several types of services, whenever you get a complete EAP from an organization. You get some financial advice, that would be limited financial advice, such as credit card debt, retirement, college, debt solutions, those types of things. You also get some limited legal advice services, some contract real estate, civil actions, some will preparation services, those types of things. Those are what you would typically find in an EAP. And you also get information on behavioral health. Services depend on what the contract is, and that is, you have to look at a lot of different things. We talked about behavioral health, as to the area we're speaking of, the geography of it, the services that are provided. Now, what we're going to be talking about today is going to be the behavioral health aspect of EAPs. That was one of the things that was brought to us, so that's what we're going to be focusing on today, okay? Now, our self-insurance fund has claim data from 2016 dealing with behavioral health claims. We're going to share some of that data with you today, so you can see as a basis point as to what we have experienced in the past, as far as behavioral health, and the money that was either spent or that we had out there as a possibility that would be incurred upon us, okay? For professional services, that would be visits to psychiatrists, psychologists, mental health counselors. In the 2016 year, we had $108,000 that was allowed to our health insurance fund for 1,335 claims, those would be individual visits. For outpatient care, we looked at 25,000 for those 23 claims. An inpatient would be 16,000 for, for six claims. In the emergency room visits, we had $19,000 that was allowed for nine claims. Now, all in total, we're looking at 2016 year, a $168,000 allowed for a total of 1,373 claims. So as we can see, there, there is a need amongst our staff and their dependents, because this is through our self-insurance fund, for some services to be provided. So, just so you can take a look at the financial data as to what fiduciary we would have been held accountable for.
So the nine claims for emergency room dealing with behavioral health, you can be the example of who it is?
Not particularly, I don't go into what specific claims would be, I, that's kind of violates a couple of things. These are just the claims that were sent to us, as the category was in behavioral health, emergency room, there were nine claims.
I'm not asking you to violate.
I'm just saying, I don't know if that's.
I could take like with a child or an adult or bankrupt, that would be.
I'm not sure, but it would be.
Something for the emergency.
It would be an emergency room visit.
That's why, Sue, I mean, we would be people health, but that's why I ask.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't have that information. Now, ComSyte, this is an organization that came to us through our employee disability program. CVG, Combined Benefits Group, is who we do our open enrollment through. And CVG bid out this year for their employee disability. One America won the bid for that. Along with their employee disability comes ComSyte, which has an EAP program along with it, okay? Now, this will take effect January 1st, 2018, regardless of anything the board decides, this is already in place, it's already available, okay? This will be available to all employees, their dependents, okay? This is going to be three visits per employee, it's going to be per issue, per year, and their dependents, okay? If they are not a member of our health insurance, they are still eligible for this. Now this is conducted via telephone to begin with, they would call a number, then they would be referred for in-person counseling. Again, this is available 24 hours a day, be able to telephone, be able to speak to someone, okay? Now, this is at no additional cost to the school board. CVG bids out the disability plan, One America won the bid, along with that is included this EAP program through ComSyte.
And now, this is something that's totally.
Yes.
And is there any, is it just coincidental that it's?
Yeah, well, whenever CVG bids it out, One America won it, and this was one of the benefits, one of the ancillary things that was put on that. But it was coincidental, this was done through CVG, they're, they're out of Texas, they handle our open enrollment, this was done through them, and whenever we began exploring EAPs and looking into the behavioral health claims that we made, we discovered that this was part of the, the new package through open enrollment that's going on right now.
What happens if they have their three visits? Can they get a prescription to continue?
If they have their three visits for whatever that issue is, the counselor will then work through, this is one of our health insurance employees, work through our health insurance, if not, it will work through their health insurance to continue the counseling if it's even. Yes, ma'am. It doesn't just stop at three, the three would be provided here, per issue.
That there's an avenue.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, they're not satisfied?
That's good.
Would that free be if they're not, because this is into all employees.
It's, it's open.
Not necessarily from our insurance.
Yes, all, all employees.
Potentially the additional ones, would I'm assuming go through health insurance claims?
If, if they're with our health insurance.
If they're with ours, then it would be.
Yeah, through their own.
It would be through their own at that point, so it really depends.
And again, it's per issue, so if there were an issue with, say you're going through a divorce and having some issues with that, and then later on having, for example, failure or pass away, you're going through some grieving, that would be a separate issue.
Right.
So it would be a separate business.
So how, I'm trying to, Russ, I'm trying to figure this out, how do we go from not having anything to now having something and it not costing us anything?
Because One America, in order to get the, the bid, if you will, through CVG, which offers services throughout the country to other districts and other organizations, they included this in that.
It's hard to believe. It was completely unsolicited. The current provider that we have for our disability insurance was increasing our rates, we didn't like that. We asked him to go out for bid, they went out for bid, One America won the bid, they're going to keep our rates the same for us, for our disability. That was great, all was said and done. When I met with Don Crook, he said, and by the way, this company is also going to provide this for all of your employees. I said, all our employees, not just the ones that are on the disability plan? And he said, yes. And so yesterday, I called the man that runs One America and said, you sure this is for all employees, not just the ones on disability? And I asked him to give it to me in writing, and he has. So it was completely unsolicited, we made a decision to change our disability provider, weren't even aware that this was going to be a value-added benefit. And then, when we had our meeting for our open enrollment with CVG, he said, we're going to get these services as well.
And the three visits, I take it, are with a, I mean, first is the call, let them know what the issue is, and then they will set you up with a psychologist or psychiatrist?
Yes, they check your zip code to find people in the area, they check the type of provider, if you're needing it for family counseling, for financial counseling, whatever it is, they, they hook you, connect you to the proper type of counselor, say masters level or above, so these are masters level and doctorate level clinicians.
Okay, great. I know we're all going through enrollment right now, and so does this become something that is part of that enrollment process, or is?
Yes, there's information in the benefit guide that we just sent out, the 2018 benefit guide describes this service to our employees.
Okay, and is it a opt-in, or is it an opt-out, or is it just?
It's just there if they need it.
Is it disclosure, it's just there?
It's just there if they need it, and they want to call and access it. And then we can choose if we want, you know, come January, we can choose to better market this, to, to make sure they're aware of it.
Yeah, One America has a lot of literature that goes along with this, that will be sent out to the employees that, after it begins, if that's what we chose to do. But this is, this will be occurring January 1st, 2018, no matter what, it is wrapped up into the open enrollment with the disability, so as I said, it's no additional cost to us, but it is an added benefit to all our employees and their dependents as well. Now, we also looked out to see what other districts were doing, the bids that they got for their EAPs. As you see, a lot of these districts are much larger than us, Sarasota County's 35,000 a year, they weren't willing to share how much it was per employee. Osceola County, 125,000 a year. Pinellas, 210, Collier, $60,000. But again, those don't really reflect the, the situation we're, they are not our neighboring counties. So we reached out to the neighboring counties nearby to see what their costs were. Marion County, they use ADNAP, and theirs is 1548 per employee. Sumter County, had a long conversation with Sumter County, they use LifeWorks. Sumter County gets about a 2% utilization rate for their EAP. Hernando County uses Bay Care Health, and Pasco County uses New Direction. All in all, we have an average between eight and 2% utilization rate between these school districts of their EAP, and that would be for all the services provided, not just the behavioral health, but also any financial or legal services, they average between 2% utilization per month, okay? Now, we also reached out to several local providers to find out if they would be interested in joining an EAP with us, and find out their hourly rates. We contacted five psychiatrists, none were interested in being part of an EAP. So we reached out to psychologists, we contacted six, and none were willing to be part of an EAP. So then we reached out to licensed mental health counselors, contacted four, and none were willing to be a part of an EAP. A few of them answered, or asked, how many employees are we talking about? When we said the number, their answer was no, because they could not commit to servicing that many employees. So again, our geography kind of limiting some of their responses there. Some just said they are not interested at all due to their schedules. But we did reach out to, to many, many local providers first to, to find out what their rates were locally, so we can have a better idea as to what costs would be for us, okay? So now, if we were to hire an employee, this is something that came up, a few things to consider, it's quite a few things to consider, this is going to be a full-time employee, part-time employee, the calendar they'll be working on, location, those types of things. One of the things, how many days a week are we talking about, would they be working, would they be full-time, five days a week, or part-time, three days a week? Many other things, we talked about, how many days in a year? Many of us know that these stressful situations occur, they don't always occur between seven o'clock and four o'clock, Monday through Friday. A lot of times they occur over the holidays, a lot of people feel a lot of stress, a lot of times it's stressful over the summer break for teachers. And if we had someone working on a teacher's schedule, how would we take care of that? How would we balance that aspect, along with the fact of a job description? We currently don't have a job description for someone who'd be working solely with employees and not with the students, okay? More things to consider with the employees. If you looked at the pension salaries, if they were on the support scale, you'd be looking at salary between 26.9 and 34, that's for 200, that's 196 days, for 251, it would be 12. For $251, it would be 12 months. $34,000 to about $47,500. Now, please keep in mind, if for some reason that they had to be called in on a weekend to deal with an emergency, they would be getting paid time and a half on top of that. So that could increase. So nothing just to keep in mind. Now, if we put them on the professional technical salary scale, because there were additional life insurance that they would have specialties, they'd be looking at, at a minimum, $34,800 to about $49,500. For 196 days or 12 months, you look at $44,500, about $63,000. And again, any time after 40 hours would be time and a half. So additional money spent on that, just to keep that in mind. Now, contracted services, this would be on an as-needed basis. But as I've said, whenever we reached out to local providers, there were none that were willing to work with us as an EAP. But if they were to, if that's what we chose, we would have to reach out on an as-needed basis to those local providers, or to Branch Johnson, Branch Gaines, local Cal, Brooksville, Lady Lake, Pasco County, to try to provide, to find a provider that would work with our employees or their family members as needs. Now, was brought up, got a question? Yes.
So you started out and you went to local providers and nobody's interested?
Yes.
And that was nobody's interested in having contracted services?
That would be as a part of an EAP.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Okay. So, and then you presented to us if we hired an employee?
Yes.
Okay. And now, we're back to contracted services.
Now, this would be on an as-needed basis, a one-time situation if an employee...
So those groups, those people you spoke to at first, did you ask them if they'd be willing to contract?
They weren't, they weren't willing to disclose their hourly rates at all, and then we also asked if they would be part of an EAP.
So they don't want to disclose your hourly rates, so now we're going to go out of county for...
No, I'm just saying, if we needed to. If we did this this way, an employee came to us looking for help, if we could not get help from them locally, we chose to do it this way, we would have to look elsewhere for help.
And that's not necessarily a bad thing, to go out of county, because some...
Behind the scenes.
...may rather take a personal item to somewhere out of county. So I don't think we should say that's not an option, but I just was curious about that first part that you presented, if they were actually asked that they would be trapped on a contractual service basis, you know, maybe even similar to how we have our contract with the school board attorney on a retainer and then on an hourly rate. But was that asked...
We asked them about their hourly rate, and none of them were willing to share their hourly rate. We also asked about them being part of an EAP, and none of them were willing to do that.
I think the interpretation discussion is being part of it, sort of like the as needed column we made. Most people don't like to do that, they have to untide a schedule. He said, "You'll be working for us one before." Then, a person would be basically, they can't commit to 24 hours a day every day. I would be happy to send them to the...
200 employees would probably agree.
Yeah.
Get them a little concerned.
But when you start hitting it down, stripping it a little bit, then...
Yeah. Because I know many of them that we contacted said that they would not have, they didn't have any openings until the spring to see anyone, to see patients at all. Which, I believe, I just, it's just something I wish we'd had a better hold of here in this country. Somebody needs help. It can only encourage our, some of our graduates to start, so.
To go into, well, it could be a hard sell, say, "Hey, come work for the school board," when they could go to work for any of those other places if there's that much demand, right?
So I mean, but we did ask, and several of them said they don't have, they wouldn't have any openings or any patients until the spring.
Within the hours that they're set?
Yes. Yeah, because they have recurring patients, regular patients that come in. And many of them, as Ms. Powers said, they have their own schedules, so they like to work within. Now, was brought up about the Wellness Center and CARE here. I had a long conversation with CARE here, and it came down to this was just beyond the scope of services they provide. They do not provide mental health counseling. It was something they were willing to look into, but the logistics of it was daunting to them to understand how they would figure it out. It would be quite a process, it would take quite a long time for them to be able to create a system. And so if it's something we want, we could ask them to do it, it would just be a while before they were able to facilitate that and it actually happened. So now, in review, okay, we have three potential options that we came up with in the direction of the board in the past. COMPSYCH, that's included in open enrollment, no cost to employees for the City Council Board. They get three visits per year, per issue, in-person counseling. We have the employee, we hired an employee that would work from the City Council Board location, provide services to our employees. We don't have any direction as whether they would be servicing family members or not, which is, right now, would just be for employees. And then the third one would be the contracted services, which would be on an as-needed basis.
The counties that you reviewed that showed, it looked like anywhere from $13 to $15 per employee, those were for EPA's, I mean, EAPs?
Yeah, those are for the commercial EAPs. They had organizations, ADNAP, LifeSource.
Is COMPSYCH in that realm of an EAP? Or is it, because it seems like it's kind of not, but it does provide some of the limited, the kind of front-end services?
It does. It provides the financial and the legal services and those things. It has online resources available for people as well. As I said, I was just focusing solely on the behavioral health aspect of it today.
Do we know, you also showed some of the counties that were willing to provide us with what their behavioral health costs were at the beginning there?
Well, that was, what I showed you was what our costs were for our self-insurance and what they paid per employee for their EAP.
Okay, we didn't have the other counties.
No, no, definitely.
So that would be to me, a question is, is there, are they seeing a substantial reduction, a benefit for having the EAP, and what impact that's had on those claims? Because if, you know, if our claims are in that same range, and now we're going to be adding COMPSYCH, then, you know, maybe it's something that we reevaluate now and we monitor now with this new service for a year, could be an approach. And then, you know, C, has our claims gone down and been retained? Because we want to provide the service, and then the other factor is, is, you know, how that, you know, how are we paying for those services? Because money has to come from somewhere.
Well, believe me, I appreciate it.
And that's not, it's not a curse of, it's trying to say, okay, how do we provide what we need with the resources? Because I'm just saying, if we had $14 times 2,200 employees, it's about $31,000, I mean, $31,000, which wouldn't provide us the cost of a employee, or it wouldn't even come close to employee plus benefits. It's probably about half of that. And I'm not sure what contract service, and maybe that it's, maybe that is in the realm of contract service, but that, that would seem to be, it would have to, you would have to have a conversation about some of the contract services of an EAP to even...
Oh, no, I, yes.
Is my missing, that's really kind of...
Yeah. And like I said, some of these districts that we talked to are fully insured, some of them are self-insured. So to get information based on what their claims are, someone would go through Ford Blue, United Healthcare, might be a little more of a challenge to find out what just their total claims for behavioral health would be.
Right.
It's definitely something I could ask, especially our neighboring districts. If I were to ask, Pinellas County is going to be quite skewed due to the population they have, the large number of staff they have. I could definitely ask in Sumter County and in Hernando County and see if they have that information, to see if those claims have gone down since they've offered the EAPs.
Or they have a percentage less than what ours are as a result of having that service. That would seem to be some value to that. I like that we're going to have this COMPSYCH, and I do hope we could promote that as we come closer to that.
And I hope the price stays the same.
It stays the same, I'd be pretty impressed with that. When this started, after we called the local providers and then we found out about the COMPSYCH, I was skeptical, as you can imagine.
Yes.
It's too good to be true, it usually is too good to be true. Ms. Searns did her due diligence and called them and stayed on them and finally got ahold of the person there, One American, said, "No, this is the truth. This is part of the package that we offer." Even if they don't offer, even if they choose not to take the disability, any of your employees and their dependents will be covered by this.
And really, I think, so this telephone calls will be, and then they can refer to the person, the person counseling, the employee, probably having that person, the face-to-face conversation. You can call, but you can go in also, so there's a difference.
But the, no, this says per, yeah, this says in-person visits.
I understood that they call, and then they see a person, right?
Yeah, then they'll send them...
No, no. It says three visits per year in-person counseling.
Yeah.
Three calls per person per year, possible referrals.
Yeah, then they would be referred to...
You don't get the person, you get referrals.
But you do get the person, you do send the call.
Yes, you call.
They call, and then, as Ms. Searns said, then they send you to the right kind of person that you would need based on your zip code and whatnot.
And it is a person.
Yes.
Yeah, you're talking to a person, but they send you to...
Yeah, then they refer you to counselor, psychologist, psychiatrist, whatever you would need in your area.
And then, let me just get some clarity on my first question, because three visits for some issues is never going to be enough.
Yes, ma'am, right.
So beyond that, COMPSYCH would make the referral or prescription for...
No, no, the counselor would.
The counselor would.
The counselor you're working with would make, would contact your insurance company to be our self-insurance fund, or whatever their insurance might be, even if they don't have our self-insurance, to continue the counseling as it is.
And that's when the additional costs of counseling would be borne by our self-insurance.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
As it is now, yes.
And I like COMPSYCH, because if that's the issue, the referral could go out of county, could come in county. And, you know, when you're talking about grieving or PTSD or something like that, sometimes they just have to get with the right person.
Ms. Searns?
So this gives our employees options.
One thing, and one thing I found this is that, I was talking to Ms. Swain about it, is this provides us, our employees, the opportunity with an EAP to know that it's okay to ask for this help, instead of trying to make perhaps deal with it on their own. They can ask for help, the help is available. So they're aware that the help is available. I think that's a great benefit to all of our employees and to their dependents as well.
Mr. Goddard?
If we have an employee who is showing warning signs of stress, warning signs that they may need help, and they have abuse...
What are you talking about?
Wait a minute, they're in education.
And when a supervisor notices those warning signs, or those triggers, are the super, are they trained right now, or are we going to train them on how they'll discuss that with the employee to give them help?
Well, currently, as per our policy, we do have where they can require fitness for duty. With an EAP, we could use those services as well, if it falls within the guidelines of whatever the R-E-A-P that we choose. We could use those services first, before we had to go perhaps to outside services.
Well, if we were, if there was a fitness for duty issue, it wouldn't go through COMPSYCH though, would it?
No, but like, as I said, we currently have a fitness for duty procedure, so we have a facility, a system set up in order to address situations that occur. This would be something, though, perhaps if we did have COMPSYCH or another EAP, now that, that we could use those services as well.
Okay. Couple of things there. Depending upon the nature of the issue that the supervisor's concerned about, if we had relationships through COMPSYCH with local providers, certainly we could use them to do the assessment for fitness for duty. But I believe what you're asking for is if the supervisor's seen some warning signs, would there be a mechanism in place to get them in contact with those who are most helpful? Certainly, if we have an EAP program in place, we can have a process by which we can do an administrative referral. We explored that a couple of years ago. That's a little tricky there. We would have to be tied to a fitness for duty, because we cannot compel someone to go there, unless we tie it to a fitness for duty. Does that make sense?
Right.
Okay, well, Mr. Goddard, I'm trying to share that.
Right.
Yeah, because fitness for duty, you can require, compel them to, but other, other things that aren't fitness for duty, it's just recommended or say, "Hey, we have this available." And you mentioned about people knowing that there's help available for it, which COMPSYCH would be an avenue for that, is, "Hey, try this," you know?
You did ask a very important question there. Would our site supervisor, or principals, assistant principals, or department heads be well-trained to recognize some warning signs? Certainly, we could train them, to train them to what degree, I don't know, I might be blundering on this here. Exactly. We would make sure they would receive some training, too. The whole purpose of the EAP program would be to be proactive. And when you start talking about doing things like fitness for duty, yeah, that's crazy, there's impact, there's impact of class, and everyone reacts to it. So we want to maximize our benefit being proactive through the referral process, through recognition and referral process.
And just like with our CARE here, I mean, there was a learning curve, but, I mean, even now, how many times will employees say, "Hey, they come to the Wellness Center because they've got a cough?" Well, we do work in education. It is a stressful business that our people are under, and my hope would be is that, whether that is CCEA, fellow colleagues that say, "Hey, you know what, have you thought about maybe just calling COMPSYCH and just, you know, getting some information from them and just finding out what services they might have, whether that's a personal issue or professional issue or something." I just, you know, it certainly seems like at least an avenue we don't have right now, and that's a good thing to be able to offer. If we find that we require more, then I think we could address that. But I think at this point, we don't even know how much this service will be used, so that would be helpful to see, when we have this, when it will get used.
It's a matter of figuring out, so CARE here, you've got to know it's available.
You've got to know.
And this, people aren't, that would involve people, so we need to be getting information. And you said something about the stress and education and agreements and articles and how about this, everything. Last one I read, it was talking about, and it was saying 51% of the teachers reported in the service that they were stressed out, sometimes kind of even depressed, with several things happening in schools, and 51% of all the teachers said they experienced some sort of stress and directly tied to the changes in education, what's happening in education. So that's a lot, but it's an opportunity to help.
Absolutely, yes. And I think educating all of our employees as to this is going to be a key, as we did with the Wellness Center, as we did with the self-insurance, explaining, make sure everyone understands what it is, how it works, how it can be used. All of those things are vital for the success of any program.
And they will have a professional development day before they come back to school in January.
Oh, yeah.
And so this would be something, would be one of the topics.
So are we saying that we're going to develop this as an EAP? Because I don't think we have a policy right now on employee assistance program, correct?
That's correct.
So are we saying that we, you are going to work on a policy and we can have it placed by January 1st? What are we saying?
The purpose of today is to share with you the various options, to get direction from the board as to, what, do you want us to continue to, or hire someone full-time, part-time, trying to contract with someone, and surrounding candidates to provide services? Or do you want us to explore a marketing of the COMPSYCH opportunity we have here today?
And then continue, and then to continue to collect data from the COMPSYCH. And because Sherry and I just, I spoke with Sherry, and just continue to collect that data and see how much is utilized, and that information, and then bring that back. So we're just looking for direction. And there's no cost to do that with COMPSYCH, right? That is correct.
Although I do, I do like Ms. Count's idea of, you know, if we are going to have that professional development day, or, you know, that welcome back type thing, maybe we could find a way, instead of sending something out to, you know, so that we could distribute to employees.
Well, we can absolutely do this through that. We can do it through the health insurance committee members, they go back to their sites before school starts back up to say, "Hey, we have this available." We'll hear the flyers, put the flyers up in the break room, or where they clock in, wherever they pick up their mail. Those are the types of things we can absolutely do, make people aware of it, like we did with the mail-in prescription, mail-in prescription for the Wellness Center. And we can absolutely do those types of things to make people aware of it and get that information out there quickly.
And maybe making CARE here at least aware when they have someone that has that, maybe even just saying to them, you know, "We don't provide that, but I'm not sure if you're aware." That is something that, you know, the district provides.
And I was glad for that on the political street corners, and this particular topic for behavioral...
Oh, I believe, yes, ma'am.
Was a big question constantly, always, because the teachers do want this help. So I think we might be amazingly surprised at how many of our teachers will, will available to tell us.
Anything that will help our employees be more, yeah, be more successful at work... Anything that will help our employees be more, yeah, be more successful at work and at home, and their life in general, that, that's what we want to do.
So if we put this in place, though, I'm just trying to get my, my hands around this, we're not going to, we're not saying we have an EAP, right? We're not going to call this an EAP, because we're not really going to make a policy for the EAP, we're just going to call this a benefit.
Yes, it's correct, it is a benefit that's currently available to all employees.
Is there a way we can define an EAP and policy that includes this, or are you saying that let's, let's wait and see what, what comes of this? Is that, I guess, that's what I understand you're saying, let's, let's put this in place and wait and see what happens, that's kind of what you're saying, right?
Well, that's what we're asking director of the board.
I think by doing this, we, we're going to have the opportunity of getting some data that we can then determine whether we need to do an EAP.
And once we get the data, then...
Right, as opposed to, you know, and we're doing this without additional costs to the district. I don't believe COMPSYCH refers to themselves as an, and...
One America is the whole EAP.
Is the whole EAP.
Yeah, COMPSYCH is the, the arm of the LBD deal of the behavioral health aspect. So One America is the umbrella, if you will, this is part of what it offers.
And as you mentioned, if we can do this and other things, might as well, it says, hey, we need to concentrate more in this area, so we might go to hiring a person to concentrate in that area, or whatever, because we did, this is show.
So, yeah, if the data shows something different, the board chooses to go in a different direction, and that's what, he directs us to do that, and that's what we'll do.
But we can start to like, you're saying that very successful, having very low costs, like a per employee, that would sense, it's very low and very successful, that's the end of it, uh, the sense, who's the system, it's in the public sector.
Can we, can we, can we...
Mr. Rich, would you add something? Just, just for clarity, you saw the change, putting in policy, is there benefit, I'm just saying benefit of putting in a policy as opposed to having a benefit or program?
Right, no, I was just trying to say, I mean, if someone says, "Yeah, the employee assistance program," what are we going to say?
Well, we have a benefit.
Right, I just want to make sure we're all, we're all in the same, we're, we're all in the understanding that, are we, are we going to call this the EAP? If we're going to call this our employee assistance program, then I would like to see something defined for an EAP.
So this would be, you'd be EAP services, I'm thinking we could work with risk management to get that put on our risk management website, on our benefits page, on our benefits website. We can pull out COMPSYCH, right there, it says for EAP services, click here for more information, what have you, we can do that. I was just wanting to caution the board that if we were putting in policy, if, for example, it was there to go back out for bid again, and you went to a different company, we have to be mindful, three, five years, we have to change policy, and I just want to caution the board.
Thank you.
And the other thing that I think we may likely could find is, if it is successful, we may find that there is an increase to mental health issues, behavioral health issues, because people are first seeking services that they weren't ordinarily seeking, and we may see initially an uptick in people getting some services. And so we need to be mindful of that as we look at it, to say, "Listen, that's a good thing, they're getting their, their services," but there might, there could be an uptick. And in some ways, if there are people that are needing our assistance to do that, I hope they do.
And I think we'd see that if we saw the number of visits, referrals out to psychiatrists, we'd see that number growing, we could expect to see the, beyond the first three visits, we'd expect to see continual usage of that, but at least then the, our employees are using this and getting the help that they need.
I wish there was a way you could test it, you know, to have somebody say, because the last thing you want is somebody to use it, and then they, you know...
Does somebody have the 800 number, Mr. Dog?
Yeah, that's... I mean, that program's a joke, we don't want that to be the case, right? So we want to make sure the services they're telling us they're going to deliver are in fact...
Well, Ms. Powers brought up Lake County, government uses this, they use COMPSYCH, and they've had great success with the, with the COMPSYCH, that's who they use to refer their patients out. So the Lake County government has, what I spoke to, was very happy with their, with what they had.
And CBG works with 10 to 15 other districts who have it, and has been successful. And he said there was recently, there's some kind of a catastrophe in one of the towns in Texas, and COMPSYCH called them and said, "Hey, don't forget about us, we can be helping your people," so.
Very good, very good.
Any other questions or feedback, or?
I just want to mention, I think everybody's involved, and there's also an explanation of, you know, the mental and the physical, and saying that physical has impact on the mental, and they're using 51, 40 out of 100, and the mental has impact on the physicals, and so they go straight together.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And, and the people, speaking to me to know that, you know, someone just doesn't know, but an issue, a behavioral issue, out of blood, there's an impact on this.
I learned that from watching Mr. Rogers. Everything goes together, everything goes together because we're all in peace.
That's right.
I'll sing it for you later. Thank you, Ms. Brown, I appreciate it. We're going to take a five-minute break in a minute, but I need to go back, I digress, I didn't turn the page. November the 4th is the marine science station, from 8 to 12. Let's try to be there.
I can.
You're out of the country, good for you.
And also, best of the arts, like that.
Yes, same again. We didn't turn the page.
We'll have parking, we'll have marine science station, we'll park, we'll go anywhere, so if you guys have parking, basically.
Thank you. And fantastic, since I have a seventh grade science teacher in the family, I've asked a seventh grade science teacher, and he's like, "Awesome."
I'm sorry, Ms. Brian, I just want to clarify, you want us to just, at this point, just use COMPSYCH, gather the data, get back and find out?
And give us a data report in six months?
Yes, ma'am, we'll do it.
Don't you think? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break.